Okay, welcome. Welcome, City Council. Glad that you're all here. It appears that we're all healthy and we're all social distancing and everybody's got a mask on. That's awesome. We appreciate our city staff as well. This is our Bountiful City Council meeting. This is our regular session at 7:00 PM. We did have a work session at 6:30. And we usually have a work session. Occasionally, we don't, but most of those start at 6 o'clock and always the public is invited to be there. So we are in odd times. And so we're meeting and I hope maybe by this time next year, this doesn't look exactly the same as it does now. I suspect we'll probably all have a lot of inoculations by then, so I think we'll be okay. Let's start by having a pledge of allegiance. And I've asked a young man, Lincoln Maxwell, he'll stand up and lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Lincoln. With that, too, we have Lincoln's father here, Greg "President" Maxwell from the Bountiful, Utah North State. And ask him if he would offer a prayer for us at our city council. Thanks, Greg, for being here.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful this evening for this opportunity to meet together as members of this community to talk about the issues and affairs of this city. We're thankful for the blessings that we receive by being a member of this community and the privileges that we enjoy by living here. We ask a blessing at this time, Father, to be upon those that are affected by this virus that we're all dealing with. We ask you to bless those that are sick or otherwise afflicted or caring for others that are fighting the virus at this time. We ask you to bless those first responders and nurses and others that are caring for those that have been affected and bless them to have the emotional and physical strength to continue to bless the rest of us and to help prevent the spread. We're grateful for this community, for the blessings that we enjoy here. And I see to bless all of us today and tonight that as we discuss these issues tonight and moving forward, that we can remember that we are brothers and sisters and sons and daughters of Thee and ask Thee for Thy Spirit to be with us always and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, President. Thanks for bringing your boys with you tonight to our council meeting. This is our time for public comment. This is a time where we have 10 minutes to hear public comments. And a person may take up to two minutes. We have a little counter right here that reminds you when two minutes are up. And anybody that comes forward, if you'll give your name and your address, we appreciate it. So with that, I'll open this up to public comment.
I'm back. You know who I am. I just wanted to mention, I asked Chris, but apparently Chris didn't know about it. One of our longstanding members of the Bountiful Community Service Council passed away last week. And it was Burnell Lovridge, so I just wanted to pay tribute to him. I've been on the council for 12 years. And he may have been on there for, I don't know, was he an original member, Richard?
I think he was.
I think he was.
It's been a long time, at least.
Yeah, so he was a longtime member, so I just wanted to pay a little tribute to him. Also, he was, as a member of the Bountiful Food Pantry Board, he was also a big-time financial donor to the pantry. So I know the pantry wants to recognize him as well. So anyway, we definitely appreciate Burnell for all he's done for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Richard. Anyone else? Please.
Mayor Lewis, I am Kathleen Bailey, 1272 Northridge Drive. And I know at some point on this agenda, you're going to finalize some discussion about Adu. I've had my opportunity to speak in a public hearing, but given how materially different things are being proposed, I may have some members of my neighborhood come. And I'm wondering if, at that time, if they do come, you might be willing to reopen the public hearing. So we can decide that when it gets to that agenda item, but I'd like to just plant that idea for you. All right.
Yeah, it would have to be noticed.
Sorry?
Go ahead.
It doesn't have to be noticed. It is a requirement for it to be noticed, but we already met that requirement. So anything in addition to it would be just above.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment period. And I'll look for an approval of minutes previously on September 29th and October 13th and 27th of 2020. Any corrections or additions before we have a motion? Not then I'll look for a motion.
Did Councilman Harris, did your changes that you had requested last month get worked in? I confess I didn't read them with a close enough eye to note whether they did.
Thank you, yes.
In that case, Mr. Mayor, I would be happy to make a motion to approve the minutes for our meeting on September 29th, October 13th, and 27th.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I apologize, Mayor. We have an amended agenda. So if you look at the agenda on, there you go, the single-page agenda, there's a new item three. If you're willing to go back to that, which is consideration of a resolution about allowing members to attend electronically through the end of the year. Thank you.
And Clint, one of you, we'll have you take that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I did see that, but I still have my old one right here in front of me.
I'll be brief. This is the third time you've seen this resolution with just some slight changes to the dates. It's very appropriately named Resolution 202020. But it basically just extends that time period. Last time, Councilmember Bradshaw asked, why don't we just do it indefinitely? I think we do it that we hope that we won't have to do it again. It gives us hope that we're not going to have to do this ever again after this. But this will keep it, allow for the council and the various commissions in the city to attend electronically through June of next year.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Consider approval or council reports. That's our next item. How about Millie?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, and Richard?
Nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Kendall, what?
Nothing, thank you.
Chris?
Oh, sorry. I didn't hear you, Mayor. I'm sorry. Yes, I have a report, Mayor. If I could, take just a couple moments. Six months ago, we broke ground for the Bountiful Veterans Park. I'd like to inform you today that we received our final inspection completion report from Bountiful City. Our park has been inspected by the city and found to be in compliance with all the regulations that needed to be done before we could become a park. So I thought that was very important. And that happened today at 1:30.
Great.
Then tomorrow, as we've been trying to fight off COVID and a lot of our senior veterans, I've received phone calls and phone calls from senior veterans. We're going to have a very limited dedication tomorrow at the Bountiful Veterans Park. We're roping off the entire park, so only those on the foundation, mayors, and the city council will be allowed in. We are going to be on Facebook with it. It's going to be Zoomed. So we've informed the veterans and the different veterans that want to be a part of it, that they can see it online. So it'll be a very short dedication lasting just 30 minutes. But we felt we had to go ahead with it because on the front of the Bountiful Veterans Park, it says "Dedicated November the 11th." In order to change that, it would cost us $8,000. So we are going ahead with it.
I like that idea.
So thank you, Mayor. So it's a number of phone calls I received these last couple days and telling individuals that they can't come. We have families flying from Arizona. We have families coming from Nevada. We have Wyoming. It's just that we've told them, we're sorry, but because of our restrictions, we are not allowed to have them in the park.
So the big time is Memorial Day.
So yes, on Memorial Day, hopefully all this will be done. We'll all be vaccinated. We'll be in good shape. And we will have a big celebration on Memorial Day on May 31st, 2021. Thanks, Mayor.
Anything else, Chris?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Kate?
Nothing, except for to congratulate Chris on a job well done.
Absolutely.
BCYC report?
Given the circumstances, I didn't invite them to this evening's meeting.
Very appropriate. Consider approval of the expenditure created in $1,000 paid October 26th, 2020, and the financial report September 2020. So I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve as printed.
Thank you, Richard.
Second.
Thanks, Millie. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll turn the next item, item number eight, over to Gary, our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At times, the council has the opportunity to make appointments to various boards and commissions. Mayor Randy Lewis has been serving on the South Davis Sewer District Board. And a time for reappointment is upon us. And so you have before you a Resolution 202016, reappointing the mayor to that board for a term of four years. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we'll look for a motion.
Move to approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Am I supposed to agree myself?
I think we're supposed to compel you to sign your name to the resolution in John Mark Night fashion.
Okay, let's see. Alan, next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. Several years ago, Bountiful City added insurance policy with Olympus Insurance to include cybersecurity coverage. And as we met with Brian Child and some of the other people with Olympus Insurance, they recommended that we contract with a company. They recommended Tanner Company. And about four years ago, four or five years ago, we had them come in and do a preliminary security check on our network. They actually installed equipment on the inside and then tried to penetrate our network to access it. It was quite an amazing process. They identified some vulnerabilities and then helped us remedy those things. Since that time, Atlanta City, Baltimore City, several other cities have been hit by cybersecurity attacks and crypto viruses where all of their data was encrypted and held hostage, essentially demanding money to be paid to these criminals to release the data. The weird thing is, these criminals, as unscrupulous as they are, if they'll pay them a couple million dollars, they'll give them their data back. And some cities play that game, others spend a couple million dollars to try to fix the problem. So with that in mind, we also had a recent event where, it didn't affect us, but Tider Technologies, who is the company we purchased Munus from, they had a cyber attack and ended up shutting down their phone systems and their data center. It didn't affect us at all because we have our own servers and software here. But it just brought it close to home that other people are being affected by that. Lately, as we have opened our network to outside employees to work from home, phone systems connected to the outside, also modifying our wireless network throughout to allow people to connect and try to make that secure. We talked to Tanner Company about coming in and doing a comprehensive security audit of our network, much more comprehensive than what they did a few years ago. We know that there are so many pieces to the puzzle of our network. We've got servers, network switches, power department connected, golf course, landfill, Wi-Fi, just so many points of vulnerability. And so we have reached out to several vendors. Tanner Company came in and gave us the lowest bid, and we think they have the best solution. So we would request that the council approve entering into a contract with Tanner Company to complete a comprehensive security analysis for the city.
Any questions for Alan?
Thank you for reading.
I'll look for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract with the Tanner Company to perform a comprehensive network security audit.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item, we'll turn over to Galen. Thanks, Galen.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight is the completion of the, providing of some of the funding we've received for CARES Act to other entities, which is allowable underneath the provisions of the CARES Act. So far, you've approved $103,0910 for South Davis Metro Fire from the funds we've received, $352,0516 to the Davis CARES program, which has been a successful program that has allowed some of our businesses to receive some funding as well. Tonight, to bring before you the final two. The first one is South Davis Recreation, which will be $45,000. And then Mosquito Abatement District, which will be $1,739. And both of those figures are based on a population formula and on a review of their expenses, which would qualify. And then they would need, just as the other two entities would need to report back on what they've done with the funding, so that we can be in compliance there. So before you tonight are those two, along with a resolution for each. Resolution 202017 for the Rec District, Resolution 202018 for the Mosquito Abatement District. And then there are interlocal agreements for you to take a look at. Just as a matter of record as well, our CARES Act funding, we've received three different allocations. They call them tranches of funds along the way. Our most recent one was for October 29th of $1.1 million roughly. So the total is $3,773,231 that we've received so far. Well, that's the total for all three. But yeah, so I just present those items to you for your approval.
Good. Any questions for Galen? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Be happy to make a motion that we adopt Resolutions 2020-17 and 2020-18 interlocal agreements governing the distribution of CARES Act funding.
Second.
Thank you, Millie. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tyson, you're the man of the hour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Great to be before you tonight. Tonight is, for me, the culmination of many, many months of work. And it's exciting to get to this point where, again, I'm presenting to you the annual financial report for the city of Bountiful. For fiscal year 2020, we again prepared a comprehensive annual financial report, which is a title that is given by the Government Finance Officers Association. It represents a financial report that has enough detail and enough transparency and enough accuracy to qualify for a specific award that's given by the GFOA. And Bountiful City has been able to achieve this award of financial reporting for the past 39 years. And will again submit this report for fiscal year 2020. And if we achieve that, we'll be at the 40th year. So it's quite the achievement. There have only been three other entities in the state of Utah that have had such a longstanding tradition of getting this CAFER award every year. And so something that we're proud of and excited to again submit for the approval of the Government Finance Officers Association. So tonight, just wanted to talk about the requirements that are put before us. Every municipality in the state has to prepare an annual financial report, but those that are over $1 million in revenue have to have an independent audit that is performed on those financial statements. And so Bountiful City has gone through that financial statement audit. It was performed by Kettington &amp; Christianson. And tonight, we have one of the partners with us, Marcus Arbuckle, who is going to talk after I'm done about the audit itself and any complications or findings that they had during the audit process. I just wanted to briefly go through a high-level understanding of how the city's doing financially. I'm happy to report that, again, our fiscal year 2020 operations continued to grow the net position or the equity position of the city. So our operations overall, our revenues were more than our expenses. And that's always a good sign, always something that we try to achieve and try to keep that stability in Bountiful financially. So good report there. From a cash balance perspective, we have healthy cash balances. Obviously, we always have needs, and those cash balances come into play when we need to do a major road project or purchase some major equipment. So the ability of Bountiful City to be a pay-as-you-go entity is something that we were striving for and working towards. The financial report itself was in your packet. And it's the thicker-bound version called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And if you have it before you, just wanted to point to just a couple of highlights that we, as a finance committee, we met a little earlier before this meeting and ran through some financial highlights and a little bit more detail. But I'll keep it high-level for our meeting tonight. On page three of the CAFER, the second bullet point there, it says that net position increased by $5,290,000. And so that's the grand total of all of our operations as a whole, of how much we increased over the fiscal year. At the very last bullet point there is that we had outstanding bonded debt of $9.3 million at the end of the fiscal year. And happy to report that just this Monday, we were able to pay off that electric revenue bond. And so as of right now, the city is completely debt-free. And so something that's exciting and encouraging for us as a city. The overall financial report, as far as the individual funds, there were some funds that had a difficult year. Light and Power is one of those. They had a significant net loss this year, which is very uncharacteristic of the Light and Power operations. And I think you'll all remember that they had some difficulties. They had two natural gas turbines that went down in their power plant and had to basically be rebuilt through the use of a company called Solar Turbines. And that ended up costing about $2 million. Then the Ecohydro plant that we rely on heavily had serious need of repairs in the tail race and in the turbines themselves and in sandblasting and repainting. And that ended up costing about $1 million. So overall, it was a hard year for the Light and Power Fund, but nothing that they couldn't overcome. And the credit goes out to them and their staff for handling those difficulties and making it through. It took its toll financially, and we're seeing those reflected in this annual financial report. But we'll keep our fingers crossed that those are just one-time setbacks and we'll move forward. So other than that, the Capital Projects Fund itself also had a net loss this year, a significant net loss. And the main reason there is that we had a lot of expenses incurred with our town square project and our city hall remodel. We also redid the road for 200 North and began the process of redoing the road for 100 North, which were all big projects. So the Capital Projects Fund itself, we know that it's going to have ebbs and flows. We accumulate funds there for a number of years, and then we spend those funds as a pay-as-you-go entity. That's the design of the Capital Projects Fund. This happened to be one of those bigger years. And so now we'll look to try and rebuild balances and get ready for the next big expenditures. So as far as the other funds of the city, there were some other net losses. Nothing too concerning that I'll spend any time on at the moment. But as always, if, as you're digging into the report, you have questions, feel free to reach out to myself or David Bergorn, my Assistant Finance Director. We're happy to answer any financial questions you do have. So with that, I'll turn some time now over to, oh, well, I guess I better ask. What questions do you have about the annual financial report or the finances for the city for fiscal year 2020?
Tyson, could I just ask a question?
Please.
I was really impressed when you said that we are debt-free. Can you give us an idea of how many cities in the state of Utah are debt-free?
That's a good question. I've not done any type of research to see how many, but I spent seven years auditing the various municipalities throughout the state of Utah, and I never came across one. So it's very rare. I won't say that it's not possible and that there are those that are out there, but none that are coming to the top of my mind. And Marcus, any idea on that one as well?
Hey, Tyson. I wanted to make sure my- There's a lot of years in a row where we've had this kind of, we really appreciate our financial department. I think the combination of just flat-out intelligence and in your areas of expertise plus your experience, I think it was so good that you, when I got here, you were our auditor.
Yep.
And now you're here, which really is a great asset to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And your department.
Yes. And that's one thing I definitely want to recognize is that this is an accumulation of countless hours of countless departments. Every department of the city is very willing to help out in accumulating information and analyzing data. And that couldn't be done without them. And the financial management of the city belongs to every department. We're the record keepers. Finance is the record keepers. The departments and the success of the city really lies with them. So I pass that credit on to all of the other department heads because they are the financial stewards of the city. It's their operations that make us viable and truly make it so that Bountiful can be the city that it is. So I'll just pass that on to everyone else, but thank you.
You've had an association with your partner there, too, from your fire department for quite a long time. So I appreciate that.
I had one question for Tyson. In our most recent bond election for Parks and Trails, we were anticipating we'd be rated as a double A minus for that bond. I recognize it's a different revenue source that we've paid off the power bonds, but would paying that off have any impact on our overall kind of creditworthiness? And could we anticipate that perhaps we'd even get a better score for that Parks and Trails bond when we go out to secure financing?
Yeah, it's a great question. We'll have to see where the bonding agencies really come in at. It is a little bit different situation because our electric revenue bonds were tied to a revenue stream, so the electric metered sales. And so they base a lot of that off of just that department's finances. So the city as a whole, yes, it's nice to be able to say that there's no outstanding debt, that any bondholders would have first rights at Bountiful City. So that always does help. Will it bump us up to, you know, a double A? I couldn't answer that. I'm not positive. It certainly would not hurt. I will say that.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll turn the time over to Marcus. Thank you.
All right, I'm Marcus Arbuckle with Kettington &amp; Christianson. Like to thank the mayor and council for allowing us to audit Bountiful City. Like to thank the mayor and council for allowing us to audit Bountiful City. It's, it's a great city. As part of an audit, we're required to report several items to governance, and we consider the council to be governance. And part of your responsibility is to oversee the financial reporting process where management is responsible for the day-to-day accounting and for writing the, the financial statements. And an audit does not relieve governance or management of those responsibilities. As auditors, we plan and perform an audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards, and we issue an opinion on the financial statements. And we've issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. That means that we feel that the financial statements are materially correct. That opinion is on the basic financial section, which includes the footnotes. And then we perform limited procedures on the supplemental schedules and the MDNA. And then the introduction portion and the statistical section are, are unaudited. Their informational purposes. Another important part of, of an audit is the review of the internal controls. It's important to know that we do not issue an opinion on the internal controls, but we do review the internal controls that are directly related to the financial reporting process. And so those, the controls that we, we go through is the cash receipting process, the cash disbursement process, the payroll process, and then the financial close and reporting process. And in doing that, we feel that the city has adequate segregation of duties and checks and balances, that we feel that city is in compliance with standards related to those internal controls. Another part of the audit is the testing that we do with the state compliance, that every year, the Utah State Auditor's Office asks us to test certain areas of compliance. This year, we, we did some tests on budgetary compliance, the Utah Retirement System, the Open and Public Meetings Act, cash management, fund balance, restricted taxes, and broad risk assessment, and then the impact fee schedule. We, we had one, one finding, and that, that was, the workers' compensation fund was, was over budget on, on the expense side. The reason for that, and it seemed like the city didn't know what the final expense was going to be until after the deadline to amend the budget. And so there's been some additional checks and balances to put in place to ensure that the city has enough budget in, in that account. There, the next part of this audit is the review of the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And anytime a governmental entity spends more than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in, in federal money, you have to have what's called a single audit. This year, the city spent a little over two million dollars in the coronavirus relief funds. The majority of that was on the, the public safety. And in doing our, our testing, we feel that the city's in compliance with the regulations that the Treasury Department has, has asked the cities to be within. And so we do not have any findings related to that, that major program. These single audits aren't very common for Bountiful. I think the last one was in 2011 with the FEMA money from that windstorm. And so the city's done a great job this year on, on that. Any, any questions about the opinion or the reports that we've talked about?
Thank you, Marcus.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Also, there, there were no difficulties performing the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements. We didn't have any disagreements with management. So I'd just like to thank Gary and Galen and Tyson and the whole finance department for all the work that they put into this. I mean, it is a lot of work to get ready for an audit and to write a CAFER, and they do a great job there. One of the best in the state, that's for sure, so.
Did you wrestle with your, anything, Marcus?
No, not too much, no.
Not too much, right? No. Your, is not a motion on, on this to accept, right now, to accept anything? Any, any questions?
No, just gratitude.
Yeah, thanks, Richard.
All right, well, thank you.
We appreciate you very much.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mayor? I think we need, through our email or, or through the regular newsletter that goes out, I think the citizens of Bountiful need to know how well-run this city is, that we're not in debt, that we get these wonderful awards from the state. I think we need to brag a bit about what the city's about.
Yeah.
So we need to get that out.
Okay, we'll do that. I think Gary's hearing that, we'll do that through our newsletter and through, through our bills as well. Let's do it.
Mayor, as we move to a parks item, would, would it be appropriate for me to take a minute and talk about a parks issue?
Absolutely.
That'd be okay? I'm going to take my mask off for a minute. This has to do with the council members Bradshaw and Barr, although in this capacity, they were not. They were Kate Bradshaw and Millie Barr and associated family members. I just wanted to say that I think that a thanks should go out to the work that these two did in promoting and helping to organize the, the positive response that the bond got on the ballot. Of course, we know that in round numbers, it passed sixty percent to forty percent. They just worked tirelessly in making sure that folks had all the information they needed online, that there were signs available for people who wanted to promote the bond as well, and to make sure that, that endeavor got all of the attention that it needed to get so that people can make an informed decision. And I know that that work happened outside of their city council responsibilities. I just wanted to tell them thanks for that, and I think it's going to be a wonderful thing for the city going forward.
Thanks, Richard. I think you speak for all the rest of us in, in noting that as well. We really do appreciate it. Thanks. Thanks, Kate. Lots of good work, and, and it passed. I was sure that it was going to. Okay, Rock, please, next time.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Appreciate your time tonight. As you're well aware, we have lots of issues in the parks with the COVID and what goes on in the parks and how difficult it has been for our staff to, I'm going to take this off if that's okay. To keep the playgrounds clean, keep the bathrooms clean, keep high-traffic areas clean, picnic tables have been a huge challenge for us. And frankly, we've been a little shy and short on equipment. Anywhere from our pressure washer, we have one, it was down for a short time for maintenance, and so that caused some issues. We've recently come by a few of the smaller sprayers that we've been using to help sanitize the bathrooms and especially doorknobs and doors and playground equipment that, that is high-traffic. Thankfully, and with Gary's approval, we've, we've come to some funding sources that's going to allow us to purchase some four-wheelers that will help us manage that sanitation going forward. We don't know what it looks like. We don't know how long coronavirus is going to be around. Obviously, it's continuing to be an issue. So we know that sanitization in the parks is going to continue to be a problem. The intent with these four-wheelers is, we have four-wheelers already. The, the newest four-wheeler is a 2001. The others are 1990 versions. And thanks to a maintenance program by staff, we've been able to keep those things running. It's now becoming more difficult and cost ineffective to continue to use those. So we found some four-wheelers that are available. That was a challenge in and of itself because everybody's outdoor and they're all recreating outdoors. So coming by four-wheelers has been a challenge. I looked on the state contract, I looked at those businesses and companies that are on the state contract for four-wheelers. They're all quite a distance away. The closest one was in Tula. There's one in Richfield, one in Springville, and one in Kanab and, or, yeah, Kanab. And so we felt, I felt that there wouldn't be a lot of cost savings if we went down there, traveled all that way, took staff time, took vehicles to, to do that. So I, I looked local. They are not on the state contract, but I think we're getting a price that's very comparable to what they were offering on the state contract. In addition to that, the local guys had four-wheelers in stock, so that helped us out. Some of them only had one and couldn't get others that we, we needed until January and February, which may or may not help us. So our recommendation to you is going with a local company here. It's in Centerville, and they're offering the Kawasaki for eleven-thousand thirteen dollars, and that's each vehicle. It comes with a snowplow, which will help us in the winter. So it's a multi-use piece of equipment too. It's not just for sanitizing, but that would be our primary use. They have them in stock, and our recommendation is, is that you approve the purchase of three of those 2021 Kawasaki 750s for the total purchase price of thirty-three thousand thirty-nine dollars. Yeah. And I leave that up for questions or your approval. Thank you.
Move to approve with the purchase price of thirty-three oh thirty-nine?
Thank you. Second?
I would second, and I would note that in my service on the mosquito abatement district, they're also having trouble getting four-wheelers. So you're, you're not alone in that, in that challenge. So I'm not necessarily surprised by your report at all that you've struggled to find four-wheelers in stock.
So a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Rock, we got you.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right. So we'll, Charles. Charles, how are you, by the way?
I'm doing good.
We're so glad to, we're so glad to have you where you are. Thank you.
Yep, we're happy to be here. Thanks for the time tonight, Mayor and Council. I come for you tonight to talk about our ACE recycling contract. This is a contract that they pick up the recycling, sorry, had to use office, steaming up. They pick up the recycling collection and then take them to our processing plant, which we have another contract with, which is Rocky Mountain Recycling. And we've been doing this for, since 2013 with ACE, and we've been having very good results. And so we were eager to continue the program and have a offer a two-year extension to ACE to continue the curbside recycling. The current agreement expires the end of this month. Okay, we'll go on with this. So right now, they're, they're asking for a 1.6% cost of living increase on that. So that would bring our rates up from the current rate of 279 right now for collection to 283. Right now, we're charging 275 for our, the residents is paying that much for the collection side of it here. We are actually subsidizing the processing of it, not the collection, or actually the collection a little bit right now. But we're looking at the funding, changing the rates in this next fiscal year budget process that we're going to be going on to. So right now, the staff would recommend that we go ahead and continue this agreement with ACE for another two years.
Any questions, Charles?
Yep.
Not all for most.
I, I do have a couple of questions. So I know that there's been some question about recycling and about if it, what the, what's on the horizon for recycling. So I know that, I don't, I don't expect you to be an expert at, at that in addition to everything else you do, but do you have any information about that?
Well, it was looking a little more promising. There were more opportunities this, earlier this year for recycling to start to can pick up a little bit and possibly even come up to where they would start to be paying more for the recycled product. Fortunately, with this COVID incident and the downturn in the economy, that has kind of lowered it down some. So right now, we're kind of in a wait-and-see. We still want to be recycling to do our best to be a good citizen and recycle products and divert them from the landfill. So right now, we still think that, that the best option is to continue subsidizing the recycling program.
Based on the benefit to the landfill, I'm assuming?
Yes, based on benefit to the landfill. Yeah, we're, we're actually diverting in 2017, 2018 fiscal year, we, we diverted 2,587 tons into recycling. In 2019, 3,086 tons into recycling. Last year in 2020 was twenty-seven, 2,797 tons into recycling and out of the landfill.
Do you know if those, do you know if those numbers take into account things that people recycle that, that then maybe aren't actually recyclable?
Out of that amount, I've been told it's approximately around 10%, but it varies that is not recyclable that is put into the recycling cans. And we still have an education program going on to try to educate the public of what we are recycling, what's, and what's not recyclable at this time. And it's all based on where the market is, where, where we can do that. Because some things are recyclable, but we just don't have a market for them to go to.
One other question, if I could?
Please.
Charles, can you super pinky promise us that recycling's going to come back? Or is that just your best professional opinion?
We all have that hope. I can't guarantee anything on that part.
Thank you.
We still think it might.
We appreciate you.
Charles, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
That, is it 10% is not recyclable?
Yes.
Does that come back to us?
No, it's, it's actually all the way from the recycling facility to another landfill.
To our landfill?
No, not to our landfill.
No, to another landfill, okay. Thank you.
You're smart not to, not to pinky promise us. That's a wise thing.
I can try, I can do our best, but I, I don't know.
You never know.
What's the principle of it.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Charles.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Appreciate you. And Mr. Bergman?
Thank you.
We got you.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to this item for proposed land use co-tax amendments regarding accessory dwelling units. Council reviewed this item at that, at your last meeting dated October 13th, 2020, where you directed, the council directed staff to further review the proposed parking requirements as well as to consider the necessity of the square footage restriction. Regarding the parking, we've provided additional analysis as far as historic records and what was the parking requirement for a single-family dwelling. And that's found on the top of page 62, that in 1955 through 1978, the city required one parking space from '79 to 2005, it was two. And then that last amendment kicked in in 2006, requiring four parking spaces. Based on this and the doctrine of a legal non-compliant or legal non-conforming use, we feel comfortable, based on the input that we received from you on the 13th, which adds additional language to the current code, which simply adds one more parking space to, to that site requiring, and requiring an accessory dwelling unit. So we're saying we're, we're sticking with a plus-one, and we could provide an alleviated concern for a house that was built a while back, and we just add a plus-one from where, from whatever the standard was when the house was built. Those changes are found in the middle of, of page 67, which is the ordinance. Regarding the consideration to the necessity of the square footage restriction, we took a hard look at the ordinance, and we took a hard look at the evolution of accessory dwelling unit, not just in Bountiful City, but as a principal. And, and we, we analyzed the 60/40, where the code indicates that, the current code indicates that an accessory dwelling unit cannot exceed 40% of the floor area of the structure. And, and based upon the existing requirement that Bountiful City has, which requires that property owner to live on-site, it doesn't restrict which side, which unit that property owner takes. So we could have a property owner living in that accessory dwelling unit, and then the renter living in the principal unit. And we, we analyzed that and found that, that the 60/40 doesn't do much for us at, at this time, based on the fact that whatever the renter, the renter gets whatever the owner dictates. So, and that's why we put the hypothetical statement here. We said, well, if an ADU's 20%, that's less than the 40, and that property owner takes a 20, it, it allows that the renter takes 80%. Again, this is just a simple hypothetical to allow us to understand why we think that the 60/40 didn't provide much, it didn't have much teeth, based on the fact, again, that the property owner could live in either the ADU or the principal unit. With that said, we, we also- With that said, we we also, even though we started doing a floor area cap, and by the way, that requirement is not in the code right now. We simply thought that it was a good idea, that it was a good trend. It goes on that same line, on that same principle. Why put up a cap on the ADU when the renter could take most of the unit? Again, we didn't think that that it makes sense. And because of that, we're not we're removing the the sixty forty regulation. And at the same time, we're not requesting to add a maximum floor area cap to the to the ADU. The last significant change and-
Francisco?
Oh, yes.
May I really fast? Can you also talk briefly about the calisthenics that an applicant, or for that matter, somebody who's appealing or concerned about the the square footage requirement? What what kind of calisthenics are we seeing people go through in order to meet the 40% currently?
Right. We saw we saw a lot of applications that were at thirty-nine point five percent, thirty, close to the 40, where they were providing a whole bunch of storage area that had to go through that ADU that were counted towards the principal use. They were labeled as Christmas decorations or a big closet, a storage area. And we thought it was too interesting that that with that counting towards the other unit, that it was right at thirty-nine point nine percent or whatever. So we we the definition in the code already had the the term a self-contained unit. And some of the other changes that we're proposing in the code are simply strengthening that specific component. And that's why we we felt that it was appropriate at this time to add specific requirements for a a separate entrance. The code did mention it, but it didn't have strict strict regulation towards it. And from time to time, we would recognize that we would receive an ADU application was which was meant more for a short-term rental or even to bypass the definition of a family, restricting it to anyone related to you or up to four unrelated individuals for just simply having roommates in the basement. And we we don't believe that that is appropriate for the ADU. However, an ADU can be used for that if it meets the parameters. But we we don't think that it was simply for you to have multiple roommates in that in that basement. And because of the challenges that we've had with administrative committee, that's the process that gets to review the ADUs through through that conditional use permit. We this is why we we thought it was appropriate to come in and amend the code from that big change that took place in 2018. And and that was exactly what we said we were going to do at that last city council retreat that took place back in January. So those are, in a nutshell, these are the specific changes. I will be more than happy to answer any questions or refer back to the ordinance to clarify any of the components. It's rare for a code to get shorter, but I think we're accomplishing that, which is great. So we do recommend that you review the proposal as presented and consider approving the the draft ordinance.
So Francisco, I was here when you presented this to the to the planning commission. What what any changes that were made here because of the recommendations of the planning commission?
The the changes that that we have in front of you are a better response to that city council meeting that that we had. The the city council, the the planning commission did, and actually, I think, Mayor, you're here for accessory structures. I think you were for a different public meeting that that you attended, I think, via Zoom. It was for accessory structures, which is coming next week. On that comment from from Planning Commission, we weren't amending the sixty forty at the time. The Planning Commission did request to change it forty-five fifty-five. And and they amended some of the or tweaked some of the recommendation we had regarding the parking, which was different from what is being presented to you.
I am inclined, before we make any vote, how many people are here for the? Do do all of you want to say something? I mean, we're the our attorney has allowed us to basically continue. I would want to not take more than a couple of minutes, but I would, if you would like. I I also received several several emails today concerning these the same issue.
And I got an email asking if it could be read during today's meeting. I don't know if we want to allow that, but just for whatever it's worth.
But if you'd like to, yeah, if you'd like to come, we don't have very many people here, so if you just-
I don't have a lot to say.
That gives you a chance to-
Yeah. My name's Tim Jones. I live at thirteen eighty-five Northridge in Bountiful. And we had this issue come up on our street where and I Francisco's been great. And we heard him speak on this several times. But the concerns that I have, and I I communicate with Kathleen Bailey quite a bit, who I know is very up on these topics. But my concern is that corporate, big purchasers come in and buy up pieces of Bountiful to to carve them into rental units. And so in the situation that happened on our street where literal staircases were removed and turned a single-family home into literally two, I mean, it was basically a duplex. That concerns me because I I don't want our streets and our neighborhoods to to go from single-family zoning and and get into double zoning. I think that's been resolved. But I would echo the work that's been done to clean up the language around having a primary owner in the home. I think pride of ownership is important to our streets and to our neighborhoods, and I like that idea. I I had some thoughts on the the sixty forty percentage, but I think what's been laid out makes sense. If you can't control which side it's in, it's kind of you lose the whole purpose of of any of that. But I I understand the need for the pressure for housing in all of our cities. And and I I think there's a good movement that's taking place with ADUs. But I I just can't stress enough that we want to keep our neighborhoods. And we purchased homes and when we live in homes in single-family neighborhoods. And we want to try to preserve that as much as possible by pride of ownership and and by traffic and parking and and all of that as well. So I appreciate the flexibility and the and the listening and and that's gone on. I think that's all that I had. Francisco, is it okay if I ask questions?
Sure.
You mentioned something about not changing the sixty forty, but looking at a total square footage. I didn't understand what you meant.
Yeah, what we mentioned is when we started this process, we were not changing the sixty forty. But but after that last city council meeting we had on the thirteenth, I believe, we we really analyzed and researched and found out that it was it didn't accomplish much for us based on the fact that the property owner could be in either unit.
That I understand. I I think you made I thought you made a different comment about total square footage of a building or whatever. I misunderstood that. So anyway, I I know that Bountiful is a great place. I grew up here. I was born here. My kids laugh that I was born at the South Davis Care Center, so. I want to I want to I want to die here. So want to keep our city nice. Thank you.
For those of you, you know, there's there's a balance here. There's because of the amount of people that are coming into Utah and along the Wasatch Front here in Davis County, you know, the legislature is putting more and more pressure on cities to do certain things. And if they don't, they're going to get they will get basically fined in a way. And that just that just comes out of the residents' pockets. And we want a place where our our children and the people that we care most about can live somewhere where we can get to them.
Yeah.
And so this this ADU, I think, has been Bountiful kind of let out with this, and certainly we're refining it. We've been doing that, and we've got experts working on on this. But Gary and the staff, all these folks, there's a lot of there's a lot of pressure from the Capitol that'll continue.
Understand that.
And actually, it'll get more intense over time. And 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 I think I think we're a step ahead. I think we're trying to do it the right way. So I just want you to know, we're not, because we all live here.
I I get it.
We feel any differently than you do.
My nephew works for a big company in Dallas that literally owns hundreds of thousands of homes across the nation. And that's all they do is churn homes and rent them. And 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 that's a business. I get it. They're making a lot of money doing it. I have no problem with where we're headed with ADUs. I get the pressure. I just don't want my street owned by, you know, seventeen homes on my street owned by a corporation.
No, we want to be really careful with that.
So I know we got to be planful in how you set up the ordinance so that that doesn't happen, but I appreciate the time.
Thank you for being reasonable. Kendall, and do you or your husband, either of you, want to say anything?
There is. There is another Kendall, and just to avoid confusion.
Oh, yeah.
He's talking to he's talking to Kendall and Hill, my friend over there.
I've known her for a long time. Okay, any, okay, again, just a couple of minutes?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I'm just going to read this letter that I wrote to send to Kendall. As people move through the phases of life, needs and situations arise, many of which could not be foreseen at the time when people make major life decisions such as buying a home. People do not know in advance if they will marry, how many children they will have, whether their family of origin will have a disaster strike. Will they be called upon to care for aging parents? Yet, they must make those major life decisions about where they want to live now and five years from now, and on down the road of life they go. Some of these decisions require risk, courage, resourcefulness, and a heart that understands capitalism. People may need to make a bridge financially between phases of life as children come and go and come again, and they advance to retirement themselves. It makes no difference if they are sharing their home with family members that they can show their genealogical ties to, or if they are opening their extra space to someone they don't know well. Great friendships are made this way as they help one another. Our city should be supportive to the good people who come to live in this community, regardless of the stage of life they are in when they come here. If they find a way to purchase property, let them manage it themselves. It is a right of being an American. They want to better their own situation. As they do this, they usually make things better for others along the way. We do need laws and ordinances, but we must protect our precious freedom to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thank you.
David Hill. I also prepared an email that I sent, and I will read that. It seems to me that the young people of the city council and administration need foremost to keep in mind to whom this ordinance is directed, that being, for the most part, older, limited-income residents who need help making ends meet financially, or perhaps people who need a little help setting aside adequate funds for their eventual retirement, or people who also may need some assistance in maintaining their property in a manner pleasing to the neighborhood in which they live. These people, many of whom have lived here in Bountiful most of their lives, they don't need or want restrictive ordinances governing governing their lives and property. Please also keep in mind that property owners have a vested interest in having quality, law-abiding residents in their home. This alone would make ADUs self-regulating. This would minimize the need for regulations. That would be burdensome to many people. I felt strongly about limiting the power of the bureaucracy in this. The ordinance gives a lot of authority to unelected people. I am in favor of creating ADU guidelines and letting property owners self-regulate their ADU in a private agreement with their renter. If the ADU later becomes a nuisance to the neighbors, then the city could get involved to help rectify any non-compliance deficiencies found. As you can see for this, I am mainly opposed to expanding the bureaucracy and especially the title restriction parts of this ordinance. I that part of that troubles me deeply that we would have a title recorded with the county deed change on our property to have an ADU. That just seems far overreach to me. That's that's how I feel about that. Thank you.
Ken, was there anything different on that email?
I think, if you don't mind, I can summarize it in nine words. Towards the end, Mr. Jase Riley wrote, I am in full support of this updated proposal.
Okay, so any any questions from?
Could I ask? Could I ask Clint a question concerning your concern as far as changing the deed of the owner of the home if they're using an ADU? Am I confusing this?
Yeah, it's 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 on page. I'm sorry, Clint.
No, go ahead.
It it's on page sixty-six, item six, I'm sorry, item C six. The text in black, if you have a color print, is what's already in the code. So this is not this isn't anything new. And it reads, a deed restriction limited the use of a property to a single-family dwelling prepared by the Bountiful City Planning Director and signed by all owners of the property in which an accessory dwelling unit is located shall be recorded with the Davis County Recorder's Office prior to occupancy of the ADU. So it it's it's simply an acknowledgement from the property owner that they are utilize it as an ADU. It is not a duplex. It is not anything else. It is just a single-family dwelling with an ADU. I'm sorry I interrupted, Mr. Drake.
Yeah, and and perhaps a better way to look at it is rather than because the word restriction is in there, it sounds like it's restrictive. But it's actually a protection for the property owner. Say, for example, you have a legal ADU and and somebody wants to challenge the fact that you're renting your basement to somebody. Well, it's something that's recorded in the deed and the city is aware of. It's all part of a public record. If somebody wants to purchase the house, it's all part of the public record. It's in the title report. It's it's actually there's actually protections in it for the property owner.
And not just that, but we get calls from real estate agents saying, hey, we got two kitchens. Is it a duplex? Can I rent? Can they my client buy it and rent it to two people? Without this, as indicated by Mr. Drake, the deed notice is get gets picked up by the title report. So as it transfer ownership, it all of the regulations are already incorporated in that.
There's a substantial market for ADUs. It actually can make a property more valuable. It can enhance the property value.
And can I jump in as well?
Yeah.
That the use of the property is being expanded through this restriction.
Correct.
The thing that's being restricted is you can't treat it as a full-on duplex. So it protects the single-family home nature of the neighborhood while still expanding the use of the property for the property owner to be able to allow the ADU. So there's no creep in that usage.
It also makes it easier for us. Francisco alluded to one of those things where maybe less calls from realtors and and prospective buyers, because they can find that information on the county or in a title report. And then also, if there is an issue with regard to enforcement, it also makes it easier for us to enforce as well.
Sir, does this answer your question?
No, it doesn't, because I think the zoning already takes care of that. It's the property is zoned as a single-family. Why do you need to formalize something to say that it's single?
Can I answer that?
Sure.
Because the city is full of noncompliant properties that were grandfathered in when the zoning was changed, that are listed as single-family residential, but that are legal, nonconforming duplexes. There has to be. It will.
You're talking going forward.
No, if there's not the deed restriction, it absolutely will turn into a duplex in the future and be marketed as such and not have an owner occupancy guarantee and deteriorate the neighborhood. It absolutely will. So it's again, it's not restricting the property owner's rights. It's expanding the property owner's rights, but not to the point that it's going to be a duplex.
An example of that, it it might also actually help with bringing a lot of those other properties into compliance and and out of the shadows, so to speak. I have a close friend that's a real estate broker, and I just happened to be at a party with him when this first ADU, the night that this that the first ADU ordinance passed. So that was a couple of years ago, I guess, a year or two ago. There was a housewarming party for somebody in in Bountiful, and I literally left this meeting and went up there. And he asked what was on the agenda, and I mentioned ADUs, and he said, oh, I've got, that's fantastic. I've got several clients I've sold houses to in Bountiful that would otherwise be illegal, that they can now apply for an ADU. So it actually will help bring some properties into compliance. He wouldn't tell me what those properties were, but he said he- He wouldn't tell me what those properties were, but he said he, he said that he was aware of them.
Thank you. Kate, please.
Francisco, I, I recall from our last council meeting, we did a couple straw polls in order to guide the, the ordinance suggestions that you would bring to us. And my recollection is that we, we appeared to have broad consensus on the parking issue, but in Part D1, I seem to recall that we had more consensus on keeping that cap and it, keeping it at 45%. So I was a little surprised to see that change, given that, that we had taken that straw poll.
Yeah, so.
Maybe I can address that one, Kate. What you have in front of you is our recommendation. You can do with it what you want, but after, after we went back, listened to what you said, and then considered the value of the 60-40, we, we decided that it makes it less administratively burdensome for the applicant, less administratively burdensome for the city, and a cap makes no sense if you can live in either half of the building. So you, if you want to have a cap, then you should probably also require the homeowner to live in one portion or another. So this is just our recommendation based on really mulling over what we think you were trying to accomplish. But if you want to do something different, we're very happy to, to accommodate that, so.
And I, it did seem like when we had a straw poll, it was, it was pretty split, you know? It was, some of the council felt like there needed to be a cap, and some of the council felt like there did not need to be a cap.
And, and just to reiterate what Francisco already talked about, we have found that all it really does is encourages dishonesty. People will submit applications that look like 60-40 when it might actually be a little bit outside of that, and, and all because there's one room that doesn't seem to fit, and so they, they just end up submitting applications that really look suspect. And it's our feeling, you know, we've never, we don't go, we don't go into people's homes and, and look at those things, but it's our feeling that a lot of the time, all it really is, is just a simple application, and as soon as it gets approved, then they just go right back to whatever percentage they want it to be, whatever makes the most sense for the, the way that the house is drawn out, the, the way that it's laid out. So for us, it was just, you know, we'd look at some of these applications, and it's like, really? So there's going to be one, one locked room in the middle of these three other rooms in the living room where they're supposedly not going to use it anymore? It just, it just didn't make a lot of sense. And it, and it really doesn't have any impact on the property any differently than it would otherwise.
But didn't increasing the square footage to 45% accommodate those outliers as far as those mechanical rooms and things like that, and those funky?
It, it could, but, but I wouldn't be surprised if applications come in and now a 44.9 with questionable spaces all over again.
But in that, and, and in that same vein, as far as, well, people are just going to lie anyway, that doesn't mean we should just remove some language just because people are going to lie.
No, but, but the example, you know, I, I can think of a couple of examples of, of, you know, a laundry room or a utility room being allocated in a, one way or another, and it really makes, has no impact on the neighborhood, no impact on the neighbors any more than it did anyways. It didn't somehow make an additional car. It didn't make additional trips. It didn't change the way that the house looked. It really didn't have any impacts, other than it was a, more of a burden on staff. That's really the only impact we could find.
It seems to me, though, that there are three important guardrails that keep these properties from becoming duplexes in the eyes of the neighborhood. One is the deed restriction, which we've already discussed at length, that sets a clear demarcation that this is not a duplex, it's an accessory dwelling unit. It is something that is in the same genus or species, but it is not a duplex. The other is the requirement that one side or the other be occupied by the, the owner. And the other is that it is not, you know, in a duplex, in a traditional sense, is a, is a 50-50 split of the, of the dwelling. And this was one of those last, for me, guardrails that says, this is not a duplex, because there is a smaller side and there is a bigger side. There is a primary and there is a, a minor side to this property. And I think that's an important signal to the neighborhood that this is still a single-family neighborhood and not an erosion of the things that we were supposed to be protecting in this, in this ordinance.
So I think the biggest issue that we've run into as a staff is just simply just your standard rambler, where it's the same square footage upstairs and downstairs. And if it's 60-40, then, then those ramblers can't be used, or we get into the creativity again, where it's, all of a sudden, they're cutting out a, a five-by-five section of their basement to, to accommodate, when, as we looked at it, we couldn't see what, what positive or negative impact that was having it. Really didn't have any impact at all, other than, again, the administrative burden on the staff and, and the property owner for having to come up with a, a solution to make it fit that percentage. But, you know, as you think about most ramblers, most ramblers are the same square footage up and down. There, you know, there might be some cantilevered areas, but it's usually not enough. And, and so you, you've got that issue.
Well, while I appreciate that perspective, I would also, just to counter that, I would, I would say the majority of the homes aren't ramblers. So I don't think we can make a sweeping ordinance for the small percentage, or even if it's 49% of the homes in Bountiful that are ramblers, I don't, I don't think we can make this one, make it a 50-50, because we think there are X amount of homes that are ramblers. I think it needs to work across the board.
I guess what we're struggling with, we're trying to understand what the purpose of limiting one or the other serves if somebody can live in either half. Because we have, we have neighbors across the street from my parents who have an ADU, and they alternate between halves based upon the needs of their renter. So we're, we're just struggling with trying to solve what it is you want to solve with, you know, Kate, your, your point is, is well taken, but it's moot, because they can, the person can live in either side, so.
I don't, I don't care that the person can live in either side. I care that there are, there's still a majority residence and a minority residence. I think the, I think there are these three important policy areas that differentiate, and I think they're equally important, three-legged stool principles. The fact that the owner is on site, whether they're in the big side or the small side, is an important principle. It's one that I think, you know, would be of, of, something that if we were ever to remove that, would very much erode this. But I think the other part of it is that we are not allowing them to essentially be equal-sized. The, the idea, the, the idea that gave birth to ADUs was the idea of a mother-in-law apartment. It was that it was something small included in an otherwise traditional single-family home. And so for me, that tradition of where these, where these units originate from is an important distinction. It may be only an important policy distinction to me, but it is an important one to me and one that I, I will personally defend.
I think, I think the spirit of the law and the letter of the law are, I think, I think the spirit of the law is we want to protect our neighborhoods. We want to preserve the feel of our neighborhoods. And so, and so if we're looking at what, the details of what's inside the footprint of the home, to me, that does not impact the neighbors. What's inside the footprint of the home, what impacts the neighbors is the parking. The things that are on the outside of the footprint of the home affect the neighbors, such as parking, what the house looks like. If we have preserved the, the look of a single-family home, when you look at the house from the outside, and when you look at how many cars are parked there, and if they can fit their cars for parking, the owner occupancy is huge. That's really important to preserving, to preserving the, the, the home. And so I think those things mitigate the impact on the neighbors. Exactly, if you asked neighbors, like, I'm sure you'd get a whole range of responses if you say, what's the right amount of square footage inside my neighbor's house of how big that, that should be allowed to be? I think if we're talking about your neighbor's house, the inside, the footprint of that home should be, they should be allowed to do whatever they want in their home, to have whoever they want live there. But when it comes to the impact on the neighbors outside of the home, the parking, the look of the home, the owner occupancy, that all impacts the neighbors. So I think that should be the focus.
Francisco, I couldn't find anywhere in this code that mentioned related, unrelated tenants, and that was something I was pretty concerned about in our previous.
Yeah, we stick to the definition of a family as well as the definition of an ADU. If you go to page 65, we, we simplified the definition and we removed one key component. Towards the end of it, it says that it's for one or more persons. We are not too pleased with that statement already in the code, because.
Where are you looking? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I may have to get up to show everyone. Page 65. You've got it, Richard. For one or more persons right here, right there. We were not pleased with that specific portion of the code in the definition, because a single-family dwelling is restricted to your family. The way that it, the ADU was restricted is one or more. So we, we, we haven't been truly affected by that, but we could see a major potential in an approved ADU, where they could have a, a, a big amount of unrelated people that's outside of a definition of a family. Definition of a family is defined as anyone that's related to you, or up to four unrelated individuals.
So four, so like, four girls or four boys could move in?
Correct. So we wanted to be consistent in terms of if the definition of a family is good enough for a single-family dwelling, it should be good enough for an ADU. We wanted to be consistent across the board. And, and we felt that we accomplished that by simply striking the one or more purses, persons, as indicated in the current definition of an ADU, and sticking to limitation through a family, which is done through the definition of a dwelling in our current code, as it is an accessory dwelling unit.
So it can be, you could rent it to a family or four unrelated people?
Correct. We wanted to be consistent as far as the type of occupants that could be in the ADU.
What happened, wasn't it originally two unrelated?
No. We can, we can go back, and I could read the definition of family if necessary?
No, I believe you.
Well, it seems like to me that Francisco has presented an action item regarding ADUs, and maybe we need to look and ask each of you where you are with, with the, with the proposed action that they're asking for from staff. And if not, then we need to, then, then we need to give a direction as to where we're, where it's going to go. So.
So, can I jump in?
Yeah, please.
So I, I don't know if you remember, but in the last meeting that we discussed this, I asked several times, really awkwardly, if somebody could tell me how the percentage was beneficial to us, if the owner could live in either half. And I think I just confused people with that question. I was surprised to get this right up in recommendation today, because it really does depart from what we had talked about last time quite a bit, which included a square footage maximum, except for potentially basement units that mirrored the upstairs and just split the home in half. But frankly, after hearing the presentation and finally getting it through my own thick brain, that with the owner being able to occupy either half, the restriction doesn't benefit us, at least in my mind, I think I'm okay with it. But I will tell you that when I got this and read through it, it was, it was, I was uncomfortable with how different it was from what we talked about last time. But I think I'm okay now. That's where I stand.
Okay. Millie?
I was more comfortable with the original draft, being that I lived for 10 years in apartments and ADUs and similar, similar neighborhoods, where I have seen these types of code, codes be heavily abused. And this was in Virginia, Salt Lake, and Provo. And I'm, I completely support renters. I completely support people wanting to subsidize their income. But I do feel we need to protect neighborhoods. It's not like Utah's built out. Bountiful is built out, but Utah is not. And so if it's to comply with the legislature's recommendation to provide affordable housing, an affordable ADU isn't going to be 3,000 square, someone's 3,000 square foot basement in a 6,000 square foot home. That's, that's close to $3,000 or $2,500 in rent. And so for, for those purposes, I think, I don't think, I, I am more comfortable with the previous draft where there were square footage restrictions, but at the 45%, and I also feel that that keeps the property from transitioning into a duplex. So I'm more, I, I'm not comfortable with this draft.
Kendall?
I, I, I don't think this is perfect, but I do like it. I am happy to support it. I feel like what this does is it allows a balance. It takes into account the neighbors. I think that's the biggest, the things that Millie is, is talking about, where she lived with friends and there were impacts. I think the biggest impacts that we're concerned about is the neighbors. And so if we can fit the cars in the parking, if we can keep the look of the home so that as you're driving by, you would never guess that there are renters in the basement, the, the code says that the home has to preserve the look of a single-family home. It has to have certain things, like walkways to the door in the back. It, it protects the neighbors from having, because it says there has to be an owner occupancy requirement. And so if I live in my home, I'm not going to want somebody living in my home that's going to throw wild parties and, and do crazy stuff. And I like the freedom of someone being able to do with their space what they deem fit. I like letting them have that freedom for their own, use of their own property. And I know there are people that I, I personally know, my neighbors, that are older people that want to stay in their home but can't afford to without the help of having some renters. And I love the, to me, that helps preserve the feel of our neighborhoods, because it helps people stay in their homes that want to, and gives them some flexibility. So I think this code, this proposal is a good balance. It, it addresses both, both of those needs.
Thank you, Kendall. Chris?
Mayor, the last couple of nights I've been reading through this, and I, I have liked the simplicity that we're seeing, taking out some of the, some of the long wording and making it more simple to understand. I never, I haven't had anyone answer the question on page 65. Francisco, would you, number four, down on page 65, where it says, accessory dwelling units, blah, 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 a self-contained dwelling unit within an owner-occupied, single-family residence, or in a detached accessory structure? What is an asset, an attached accessory structure? Is that another home?
A garage.
It's what?
A garage. It's a structure not attached to the house.
So I could live in my garage?
Yeah.
I could rent out my garage for someone to live in my garage?
Yeah, this is the classical, the, the, the typical mother-in-law apartment, say, on, adjacent to or on top of an existing garage.
So, so.
If you want to rent your kids or something like that.
But, but isn't that attached? Or is there garages that are not attached?
No, this is, this is detached. So this would be a separate structure that's not attached to the house.
And then above that garage, there is a dwelling that has a sink, a bathroom. that has a sink, a bathroom, a kitchen, all of those accessories? So it's an independent dwelling?
Correct.
There's one at the end of my street, Chris. If you've ever gone to the end where Al Collins used to live.
Yes.
Al Collins has a house. Next to his house, he has a garage. And above the garage is an apartment.
Okay, thank you. Got it. Thank you.
Are you in favor?
I'm in favor. I like the simplicity of this. I do.
Kay. I'm not comfortable with it as drafted. I feel strongly about keeping the percentages as I've already described. I think that's one of the parts of the stool that I think keeps us from eroding this further. I think the legislature is requiring us and putting pressure on us to meet their housing standards. And I think the existing ordinance did that. And I think this takes it to another step when we are not being forced by the legislature to do. And I think that there are these critical things that to me protect the single-family nature of what people bought into and the kind of the trust that establishes a neighborhood between neighbors in terms of the impacts we think we're having on each other. And this change on the percentage greatly concerns me. And so with that in it, I'm not comfortable with this ordinance.
So what we have here is one of those circumstances where our feelings, our aesthetics, our experiences, I don't know that we're really far, far apart in most of what we're talking about here. But you've all given your feelings. So we're asking for an action item. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I've got another question if I could.
Please.
The detached, the 1,250 square feet we had talked about as a maximum square footage was especially key, I thought, in restricting the size of a detached accessory dwelling unit. And I mean, if someone owns a large lot in Bountiful and decides that they want to put an accessory dwelling unit over a detached garage or in an attached structure, is the 10% lot consumption going to apply there? Or what's our restriction?
It's not lost because it's already incorporated in the accessory structure code. So this is duplication. This is here. In a detached, as Chris indicated, accessory structure, I'm sorry, a detached ADU is an accessory structure. And that 10% restriction, we already have that in the code. So the attempt here, as we're deleting D2, was simply we don't need it in two places. It's already part of the allowed use. You get 10%. If you apply for a conditional use permit, you could ask up to 15%. And that's already part of the code.
So that means that, for instance, if I have an acre lot and I have a 2,000 square foot footprint home, then I can build a 2,600 square foot detached accessory dwelling unit?
Yes.
We're still discussing.
I'm sorry, please.
We're still discussing detached, like accessory structures in planning commission, the definition of that. We're still in the middle of that discussion.
Accessory structures, correct. And going back to Richard's point, it goes back on that same principle that, on the 6040, where the current code does limit that detached accessory dwelling unit to that 40% maximum. But again, it doesn't regulate who can live. I mean, it does regulate, it gives that right to the property owner. So you could have that property owner in that smaller detached garage and the renter in the full house, in the 2,000 square foot home. It goes back to the exact same principle of that the property owner is given the right to live in either unit. And vice versa, it gives that renter the remaining unchosen or designated space.
I don't want to get lost in hypotheticals, but if I have a two-and-a-half-story house with a 2,000 square foot footprint, then I'm going to have 10,000 square feet on my one acre lot of accessory dwelling unit and house. That seems like a lot. It seems like we'd want to restrict that.
I don't think we have, again, we don't have a lot of heartburn with whatever you guys want to do. I think we were just trying to make it simpler.
I love that part of it.
For everyone. But if you want to put a, if there should be a cap, we went back and forth with staff too, whether or not there ought to be a cap on detached structures. You're not going to hurt our feelings in any of this, just so you know.
I'd be really comfortable putting a 1,250 square foot limit on detached structures.
Well, may I ask a follow-up question to that? So in Section C, Item 4, when it says a maximum of one accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted as a conditional use on a lot or parcel in a single-family residential zone, does this mean you could build an ADU and a separate garage? It's only a garage with an ADU above it?
Right. It's either a detached ADU or an attached ADU, not both.
But if someone were to build, if someone already has an existing detached garage without an ADU above it, they couldn't then, if their lot was big enough, could they then build a separate ADU? Or can you not have more than three structures on a property?
I'm sorry, I don't follow the question. You mean separate ADU as in another detached structure?
I'll have my translator.
Yeah, another, so you have three units on.
So you could have three structures on a property?
You could, because the accessory structure code says that 10% is limited to all accessory structures. Add it together.
Add it together.
Correct.
So you could have a separate, you could have detached garage, your main, the main residence plus a guest house or an ADU in the back.
Or, yeah, or even a fourth one. As long as, as long as all those detached accessory structures cannot exceed 10% of the size of the lot.
That's a fancy house. Okay, interesting.
And it still has to meet all the other building codes.
Right, which, not just the building code, but a landscaping requirement of 60% and permissible lot coverage of 40 and so forth.
I know I'm the newest member of the council. And I'm not, and it goes without saying that what we decide will be very difficult to reverse if we decide to adopt what is written. But again, speaking from personal experience, I think the square footage requirement within a home, within the home, is pertinent. And it's for the same reason my husband doesn't practice dentistry in our basement. You know, there's certain codes that we put on within neighborhoods so everyone that's in that neighborhood can know what to expect, can know what is appropriate, and they can know when they may be justified in making complaints. But I do, I do think renters are wonderful. So, and I've been a rent, we've all been renters. And so I think it's a wonderful, a wonderful thing for people who want to stay in their homes long-term.
I just wish to echo what Mr. Hill said. We're not going to be hurt if we add the 1,250 or any other regulation. But I just wanted to say that if you do add the 1,250 and then the property owner decides to take the smaller unit, the ADU, they're restricted at that. They're restricted at 1,250.
But can't they choose to live in the other one?
They can't, they could.
Yeah. I think for keeping it so we avoid duplexes, I think that is imperative. That's just my opinion, and I'm a newbie.
So.
Can I ask one more thing?
Whether you're a newbie or not, whether you're new or not is that your opinion and your experiences are important.
Yeah. One more question?
Sure.
For the three staff members sitting at the tables here. Miranda, give us your best 30-second thoughts on the restrictions versus the not restrictions? Your professional opinions.
I'm sorry, I don't follow in this. You guys want to go first? The restriction versus the non?
Yeah.
Having a restriction or not having a restriction, what's your opinion?
On square footage?
My opinion's in the staff report.
Okay. The two of you concur?
I've seen some really nice, in fact, we've got one right now. A really nice, really, really good-looking project that would not comply if we put restrictions on it. And it's the kind of project that I don't think anybody in this room would complain about.
How is it going through under the existing ADU ordinance, which does have those restrictions? I mean, this is not adopted yet, so they're under, their application is under the.
It's pending right now because it would have been denied. And we're just saying, well, you have to wait. And that's not why we're suggesting this. I'm just saying that that's an example of a really nice project. And with regard, are you talking about the restrictions on the 1,250 or the restrictions on the 6040?
Yes.
You're talking about both?
Both. I mean, we've removed them all.
Yeah.
So are we losing control?
To me, the difference between a duplex and an ADU is the owner-occupied component. There's no other, there's really no difference to me other than that. There's plenty of duplexes that aren't identical, 50/50. To me, it's the ownership that matters. So I, and I probably should have been a little bit better at defining. When I said rambler, I'm talking anything that doesn't have a second story above ground. They're almost always identical.
There were qualifiers for that in the previous ordinance. If the first floor mirrored the second floor, then that would be in compliance. That was already.
No, it wouldn't.
That was not there.
I know. I'm saying that was, that was the draft before this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
It accommodated that anomaly. But for the larger homes, the 7,000 square foot homes with 3,000 square foot basements, it's not, it's not that low-income housing if you just chop off the basement, which is, I guess, what are we trying to accommodate?
Well, and I guess that's where I kind of get confused because are we talking about low-income housing or are we talking about affordable housing? Because to me, those are two different things. And you had mentioned an example of a 6,000 square foot house with a 3,000 square foot house. Let me give you an example of, let's say there's a family that has two-income household. One of them's a teacher at an elementary school in Bountiful and another one's a teacher at a junior high school here in Bountiful. And they can't afford to live in the neighborhood within the school boundaries that they teach at and that they want their children to go to. And the only way that they can afford to live in that, in the neighborhoods that would allow them to go to those schools and make that commute would be to either purchase a house and rent the 3,000 square feet or rent the 3,000 square feet from somebody that owns the home. And so to me, there's two components to affordability and there's different ways of defining affordability. There's definitely the affordable housing component that we talk about from the state that we want to hear from and that we want to see. But then there's that example I just gave where there might be somebody that would like to live in Bountiful for various reasons, whether it's they lived here, grew up here and want to be here or they work here and they want their kids to go to the schools that they work at as using that example. To me, that's a great use as well. And so for me, the restrictions, if you're just limiting it to low-income housing is the term that was just used and that aspect of affordable housing, then I think the restrictions are probably what you want to do. But if you're more interested in less restrictions for homeowners, less confusion for homeowners and less administrative burden for Francisco and his staff, then it's my opinion that there's, it's not going to be that much of a difference with the restrictions. And I guess I would say that I disagree with the part where if the city adopts this, that we can't change it. You're the city council, you're going to change it whenever you want. And the only harm that would be is that if you had five ADUs that you didn't like that came in and applied, then you know, that's the price that we would have to pay. But based on what we're seeing, I don't think that's going to be the case.
Kimberly, please.
I'm just ready to make a motion, so.
I still have an additional question for Francisco, if I might. Francisco, I seem to recall in our last council meeting, you had a spreadsheet of all of the ADUs that had been permitted to date. And in that spreadsheet, I don't recall that there were many that would have, that were bumping up against our, either the square footage or the percentage restrictions.
I think there were eight that were over the square footage of 1,250.
Yeah, it was, no, it was less than that. I got my file. I can look it for us if you'd like. That seems right.
While he's looking at that, I would just add to my comments that I agree with Gary. We don't, there's no, there's no ownership here. You guys are the city council and we want, and you are the ones elected to make this decision. We've made a recommendation based on what we thought we heard at the last meeting.
And more than that, after we discussed what we thought was best, but if you want to do something.
Yeah, we take no offense to that. We fully support.
To quote Richard, "Do you super pinky promise?"
But everybody's spoken.
I don't know what the binding effect of super pinky promises are.
Carolyn wants to make a motion and Kimberly, if you want to make a motion, you're allowed to make a motion.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we approve ordinance 2020-10, amending the land use code regarding ADUs.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Kate had a substitute motion. I did try and register a substitute motion before the second. My substitute motion would be that we adopt the ordinance through the sections dealing with parking and not adopt the sections dealing with percentages and that we continue to look at those percentages, including the percentages dealing with detached structures.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So we're voting on Kate's substitute?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
I.
Can we just make sure that we're clear on what, that Francisco's clear? Are you clear on what was just?
Yeah, I think, thank you for asking. I think we adopted Section A, B, and C. And we did not move forward on Section D, D and E, actually.
Which is the square footage.
Yeah, E to my reading is the detached structures and D is the.
Attached.
The attached percentage portion.
So A, B, and C is amended. We can print the ordinance.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, excuse me. So did it not, did we not include? So we struck, so what you just voted on strikes the square footage requirements.
It leaves the, it would leave the existing code in place on D and E for a future discussion.
Okay.
So.
Which was 6040, 6045?
Nothing.
So there would be, if it were adopted the way, if we do what the council just did, then you have less restrictions than anything you've talked about yet today. Somebody could come in tomorrow and apply for a very, very different thing than what you, than what I think you're intending because you're only adopting half the ordinance, which means half of those restrictions are not there.
Okay, then I change, can I re-send my vote?
You're going to have to revote because you already voted. So, yeah, do you understand what I'm saying? If we adopt half of the ordinance and only half of the ordinance applies and somebody can come in and apply under those adopted portions of the ordinance?
But I believe what I was asking was to have D and E come back in our next council meeting for another discussion with different recommendations for the percentages, particularly for detached structures.
I would suggest, if you want to do it that way, that you just, that we just table it again and not, we won't touch those parts. If the council doesn't want us to look at that, we'll just look at the parts that you're asking us to look at.
Remember too, we will not have another, when's the next?
And if I could comment, I have four, four applications in limbo right now. Waiting for.
Aren't they, aren't they able to be processed based on what's current code?
They were filed before the, we noticed the first public hearing. I'm sorry, they were filed after we noticed the first public hearing with the planning commission. Therefore, they have to wait until we have a resolution here.
Can we just update the detached, the detached square footage limit tonight? See if we can get consensus or enough to pass?
I think that's a, I'm sorry, that's a question I think more for Clint. But I just wanted to let you know that we have four on hold right now. I I think that's a, I'm sorry, that's a question I think more for Clint, but but I just wanted to let you know that we have four on hold right now, including Mr. Riley's.
Okay.
Who commented via the phone today.
So, um.
We have a question from Campbell.
Can we update the code to say 1250 square footage maps for detached, um, structure? Can we update that?
Well, I I would hate, I would hate to adopt anything in a rush.
I feel like this has been discussed, um, already and it seems like staff came back with a recommendation tonight. And so I'd like to see if we can make a decision. There's four people in Limbo. We've been talking about this for a while.
Is there additional information we could get to you tonight or is it things that we'll need to research? What what is it that you were specifically looking for, Kate?
Well, I think what the 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 line of questioning that Councilman Pigginson was was raising about the ability for what seems like it could be a quite large detached ADU built in someone's property that could potentially be larger than the primary home. It that's an interesting impact for a for a neighborhood that to not have that size limitation on it.
Yeah, and and those do exist.
And I'm not sure, I mean, uh.
I'll give you an example. We were having this discussion, um, a couple of weeks ago as a staff and I have a neighbor that's footprint of their house is probably roughly 2,500 square feet, the footprint. The footprint of their garage behind the house, um, I actually, um, measured it and it's like, um, 100 by 50. It's mass or sorry, uh, like 250 by 50. It's massive. It's it's you could fit three of the houses in the accessory structure behind the house. I'm not saying that's a good thing. I'm just saying those things do exist. And I think they exist in Bountiful too.
I think we have some examples of of very large garages that can be built in Bountiful. In ways that will definitely impact neighborhoods. So, um, I I guess my suggestion is if 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 we feel like we're making a mess of the code, then.
Yeah, yes, I I don't, I I would vote completely against this. If I if we can't have the length on square footage, I would vote with me against that. Square footage in the accessory dwelling as well.
And and here's what I'm saying about a partial adoption. It's kind of a unique thing. Um, I I don't recall ever in my career where we've adopted partially something. And so I the safest way that I can advise you today to do is not to adopt anything and let it continue to be pending. I think there's a very good argument to be made that if if what if we only adopt half of it, then the other half, um, that's pending still. It's still pending, so nobody can apply. So but if that's the argument, then why are we adopting it in the first place? Because those people that are waiting still have to wait because there's still a pending ordinance.
Well, should we table it to another meeting?
So you, yeah, it my recommendation is is if you want more information that this that the proper action tonight would be to table it and and not adopt anything because it's 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 either going to, it's going to be if if it's partially adopted, it that's either what we're rolling with and that's what people can apply for or it's still pending and they we can't process the application still.
So where do we have a motion on the table?
Can I can I make a comment? So it seems like in our last meeting, there was general consensus, at least it seemed that there was on a 1,250 square foot maximum size for the ADU with the acknowledgement that the homeowner could live in either house or either part of the ADU with an exception that was discussed that I think had general support that if the ADU was just the the basement of the home, that there would be an exemption for that, an exception for that square footage limitation, so that the basement could be rented as a whole or the upstairs could be rented as a whole.
That was if your footprint was the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that a detached ADU would be treated with the same square footage maximum as an in-home ADU at 1,250 square feet. Is there, is there enough interest in that idea still that we could adopt something like that tonight?
So you're saying 1,250 for a square foot maximum, except for if it's a basement, then it can be whatever the footprint.
It can be the full basement.
Only if the footprint is the exact same as the main level.
I don't know. I don't know. How how would Francisco draft that?
Yeah, that's up and down home, you know, basement.
Which is the rambles, the rambles. Yeah.
Then folks can rent out their full base.
So while Francisco's looking, maybe I can.
Again, that question is how how do you, I mean, without saying code, if your home is a is a rambler under the usual understanding of rambler, you can do X.
In North Salt Lake, in North Salt Lake, the way they said it was 1,250.
That's what I'm looking for.
Unless it's a basement.
Yeah.
The the week, that's sort of the North Salt Lake model. And the the weakness of that model is that not every ADU is a basement. Some of them are the back of the house or a wheel on the house.
Right.
Which is why as staff, we went away from trying to define it as basement only and went with simply, um, removing the restrictions 6040 for the house. Because you don't know where the ADU is going to be. And it does become a drafting challenge to define, you know, the base. Doesn't mean it's impossible. It but but that is a weakness. That's actually a hole in North Salt Lake's ordinance that is not addressed. What do you do if the ADU is not a basement? It's not, it's unaddressed.
Qualifier of 1,200 square feet.
What's that?
But don't they have the qualifier of 1,200 square feet?
So I, as I recall, I can't remember exactly. I mean, it can be drafted that way. So let me, so let me, I'm going to try and summarize what was said again, which is, um, if it's if it's in a basement, there is no cap on square footage. If it's anyplace else, including detached, there is a cap of 1,200 square feet.
Well, any anywhere else, meaning also this, the main floor of the home or the second floor of the home.
Any place besides the basement, including detached, would would have would have a square foot cap of 12.
It's a garage and you have something over the garage, is all over the garage being 1,250?
Uh huh.
So in other words, just detached has a cap attached.
No.
No, attached also has a cap unless you're basement.
Attached to the cap of 1,250 unless it's the full basement and you can rent a full base.
If we want to borrow some language from our neighbors to the north, this is what North Salt Lake wrote. Basement dwelling units shall be permitted to occupy the entirety of the basement of the primary home regardless of area or bedroom count. I don't think we need to go into details of that last section. Shall be permitted to occupy the entirety of the basement of the primary house.
Yeah, that's keeping on right there.
And then the next one. This is, e- even though they're addressing detached structures, what I'm hearing is that it would, uh, apply to attach to as long as it's not a basement. We could add that to the 350. I mean, they wrote the size of the accessory dwelling unit shall be at least 300 square feet and shall not exceed 1,200 square feet.
1,250.
Right, I'm just, yeah, yeah, so we could borrow their that language.
I I've been converted to the idea that drafting on the fly, uh, is messy. While we've already voted the motion, I think I would be supportive of someone making a secondary motion to re-vote on a motion table.
So moved.
So that Francisco can work on that language in the right spot.
Go ahead and do it again. I motion that we table this discussion.
A second?
I'll second that.
I don't want it tabled. I don't want it tabled. I there are people waiting.
Yeah.
If we can, if we can hammer it out, I I agree, Kate, it's sketchy to.
All in favor?
So here here would be my question to to Richard in discussion time. We'd almost then need somebody, Francisco or someone else with their laptop, to put the code up there and then insert it into the right spot so we could look at it and then make sure it fit was what everyone agreed to and then we could vote it as the draft presented on the screen. But short of that, we're somewhat limited by being, I think, comfortable where we're inserting it in the right spot.
Sure. That's a good point. I just hate for people to wait.
Yeah, but I.
But we want to get it done.
Yeah.
Sorry.
None. Everyone knows how I feel, so.
There we have motion in the second.
Well, now, I are you, are you firing at the laptop or?
I can, I I can work as directed.
Can you, um, put it up on your screen here?
We can.
USB.
You better hammer it out.
Um, you, do you mind?
Yes, unless unless it's withdrawn. Yes, unless the motion is withdrawn.
So.
No, was it a motion to table? Is that what? I can't remember what. Yes. Yeah, motion to table.
Do we want to withdraw? I motion to withdraw.
Yeah, so now we're just back at the. Yeah, you can just, no, because it's gone. It doesn't have a second anymore. And, um, yeah, I have full, when I was a kid, there was this guy named Mike Fratello. He was the, he used to be the the coach of the Atlanta Hawks. And then he became a telecommentator and they call him the czar of the telestrator. This guy is the czar of the whiteboard and the czar of the laptop. So if anybody can do it, it's it's the czar of the whiteboard over there.
May I, maybe I can make a recommendation that we can, we can just take a recess for 10 minutes.
My ultimate idea is we do have an item 15 that we could work on while someone else works on the drafting.
Yeah, that one's take about 30 seconds.
It might. Maybe it'll take longer.
It might, but he can draw it out. But that it'd it'd be, I think it would be better either to table it or to give us 10 minutes to draft something that we can show you than trying to do it on the fly.
I can we can we go to the next item and then have a recess? Thank you.
So we'll just, so Mayor, it would just be that we're going to, uh, move to the next item and return to, uh, we'll return back to the ADU item.
All right.
Move on to the next.
Administrative law, that's you?
Yeah. So just really quickly, um, as the council is aware, um, we have an administrative law judge that handles various, um, appeals uh, that are held pursuant to our municipal code. He, um, he's, he's done a fine job. He's he's we he's been reappointed a couple of times now. This, we're just looking for him to be reappointed once again. Um, this would be, um, for him to, uh, serve until, uh, June of 2022. Any questions?
Yes, if I may, Mayor, has this administrative law judge, Mr. Bronson, made any decisions, uh, that have been contrary to what you feel are the city's best interests?
Um, he has made, he has not always ruled in our favor. I'll I'll say that.
Does quite answer my question.
Um, he he holds himself out as basically a a civil litigator. Um, he's currently working, although he's not an intellectual property attorney, he he's actually an intellectual property law firm right now. The firm that he was with for years dissolved and he needed a place to go and that's where he ended up. And I think it's, he's he's found it really interesting what he's told me and because he's actually starting to work on some of, not the IP stuff, but the litigation that's involved with the IP. Um, so two things there, this is completely your choice. We, he doesn't have to be reappointed and and it's not necessary that we do it right away. We don't have any appeals pending. We can, we could certainly bring more. The other thing is is he doesn't have to be our only ALJ. We can appoint as many ALJs, ALJs as we'd like. Um, and so if the council would like us to bring, you know, a couple more names or one more name or whatever you would like to see, we're happy to do that. I couldn't tell you. I know that, um, Leyton City has three or four that that on that they not necessarily, not because they have so many, um, appeals, but just that in case there's conflicts or they need to get something done right away, um, they they have the option of having additional administrative law judges. That's the only one I could really speak to that I that I know. Well, I know West Valley City has two or three different judges for different reasons, but those are much bigger cities.
Is he the one that ruled on the, uh,
He is.
Interpretation of the side yard, front yard, backyard?
He is.
Okay. You recommend that we renew?
Sorry, I didn't understand that.
Do you recommend that we reappoint?
Um, he he's, he's been fine. He's he's courteous toward to the public and, uh, he possesses the competency to to do the job. But to answer your question, yeah, he's not always ruled in our favor.
Is he the ALJ for other cities besides us or we sole?
No, I think, I think because I don't think he was when we, when he, when we brought him on. But I think, um, as a result of him being with Bountiful, he's picked up a couple of others like North Salt Lake, I think uses them. There might be one or two others.
Clint, did I hear? He lives in Bountiful?
Um, he used to. I don't know if he still does. I I couldn't speak to if he still does.
But you're seeking approval.
Yeah. Um. Well.
You're asking, you're asking, you're asking us to consider.
I, can I ask one more question? Well, no, I just wanted to express an opinion. I don't like his interpretation of our, uh, land use.
I would say if you don't agree with his interpretations and you feel that's not the best case for the city, then then don't approve him. We can, we can get, we can bring another name.
Okay.
Thoughts?
I I think that it's good to try someone new.
Yeah, I I'd like to make a motion that we table this item and that we, uh, get additional recommendations. And if Mr. Bronson ends up, uh, being the right one later, great. If not, we'll look for other names from you, Clint.
Very good.
That's my motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Mayor, can I clarify this too? I it's not that I want him to rule in our favor all the time. I I promise you it's not. It's that I don't like at all his interpretation of that issue.
I understand.
So I I'm not trying to find a yes man.
No.
I just, I I don't like his, uh, land use interpretation. Yeah, so thank you.
Okay, so now we're back to our, do we still need?
Would you like us to recess for five minutes?
I don't think it would hurt to give give us five minutes.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we recess for five minutes.
How far is it to the ice cream place?
What are you making us for two seconds? General, how's your thing doing? Oh, that was a little cute picture with you guys in your Halloween outfits. That was really fun. You like my daughter Katie, then just always on the couch. They just go off.
Are we back on?
Yeah, we're back in session.
All right, so what? I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So the language that we added is to Section D. And I'm just showing you on the screen, and by the way, the people at home are able to view this right now. So I'm just going to read, "In addition to the general accessory dwelling unit requirement, an attached accessory dwelling unit shall be deemed unlawful and shall not be occupied unless all of the following criteria are met. One shall be at least 350 square feet in size," and this is the new language from today, "and shall not exceed 1,250 square feet. However, accessory dwelling units located in a basement may occupy the entire basement of the principal unit."
We recognize that it says basement twice, but you really can't say that without saying basement twice.
We tried.
Sure, if the council.
This is from our land use code, basement, "Any floor level below the first story in a building, except that a floor level in a building have only one floor level shall be classified as a basement unless such floor level qualifies as a first story as defined herein."
One more time, sorry.
Maybe I can pull it up. It might be better if I pulled it up from the website, actually, so we could follow along. Is that okay?
Sure.
It's basically saying anything below the first level, the floor level, the ground floor.
I'd like to see it. Thanks, Francisco.
No worries. We're on it. All right, we're looking at our definitions. There it is. Let me zoom in a little bit, and I'll read it again. Basement, "Any floor level below the first story in a building, except that a floor level in a building have only one floor level shall be classified as a basement unless such floor level qualifies as a first story as defined herein."
So if someone doesn't have a basement, they could rent out their main level and live in the upstairs? If they have a two-story home without a basement?
Unless. Mayor, I believe this definition is a copy and paste from the building code. I believe so.
So just to make sure we're fully understanding this. Although it's incredibly common in our area for people to have, you know, below-grade traditional basements, if someone built the type of house where you have a you don't have a below-grade basement, you only have a foundation that goes two or so feet into the ground. What do we call that, a slab?
A crawl space.
A crawl space. Does that first floor, then, that you would enter the home in, does that become their basement? And if they built a story above that, that would become? Because I'm with the mayor on his description of the person who crafted this.
I think that, I mean, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, but I think that we also define first story. And it's also a copy and paste from the building code. And I don't think, and in the past, in my career, I've had the opportunities to review these definitions, and they're somewhat difficult to copy and definition that was intended for more compliance with building code and materials and compliance with that, taking that over and using it for land use. Not a good practice, as we're struggling with reading this definition. I think we are too.
The fifth word in the second line is supposed to be having. Just for your information, if you want to clean that up at some point in the future, Francisco. Except in a building having only one floor level.
Mr. Mayor.
So what it's saying is, oh, sorry.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt, please.
I think what it's saying is on Main Street here, we have a house that's just a basement with a door. Goes down to the basement. So that's not a basement if it can be classified as a first floor.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's a basement if there's a first floor.
Right.
You could interpret dreams.
Okay, can you go back to your new language?
Absolutely. There you go.
Okay, so this becomes our D, or does that become?
This is D1.
D1. Okay, what happens in E? Anything? Did you add any text in E?
No. Thank you. It's a long night. Yep.
Okay, so you kept the, so you kept striking E1. You make, it changes in E3? Sorry, E3, okay, so those are the same.
Everything is the same in E.
Or, I know, but until I could see it. I can't verify that it's the same. And then okay, so is there no longer an E5?
No, it's still there.
That's still there, okay.
I want to thank the staff for their work on this. And I'd like to make a motion that we accept this ordinance with these additions made by staff.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I'm, hold on. Can I see the language again, please?
Yes. Sorry, I jumped the gun there. It's up on the screen.
So does this change, so if the ADU can't exceed 1,250 square feet, doesn't that change who can live in the top or the bottom? Because you can't, if you can't, what if the top floor exceeds 1,250 square feet? They can live in the basement?
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hold on before, I can still see some consternation there. Is there something we can clarify?
I'm just, I'm still worried about it becoming 50/50 and and transitioning into duplex territory. And again, I don't need to keep harping on this, but as someone who was recently in this world, if ADUs really do, it snowballs fast. Renting, subletting, selling contracts to different friends, different, I'm just, again, and I'm of the opinion you plan for the worst, hope for the best. And again, I'm only going off of personal experience, but I just, I think we need to be very mindful of what we are agreeing to.
And a second?
Second.
Thank, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.